In accordance with the open public meetings, Act 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice to this regular meeting of the planning board of the township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone can please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Chase asked to be a little late today. Alex Karazi.
Here.
Carl Hauck asked to be excused. Cecile MacIver. Robert Mettler.
Here.
Mustafa Manzray.
Yeah.
Charles Brown. Robert Thomas. Jennifer Ragnow.
Here.
Godwin Amalola. And Chairman Orsini.
Here. So it seems we have no minutes, no resolutions, and no vouchers? Is this true?
This is the truth.
All right. Fantastic. So we'll move right into public comments. So this is the portion of the meeting where we open up to the public for any planning comments or questions that are not covered by a hearing that's happening tonight. So entertain a motion to open to the public.
I'm moved open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting's open for the public. We only have principals here tonight.
Seeing no one coming forward for this public hearing, I would move that the hearing be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So the first hearing tonight, Somerset Properties, PLN 0800015.
Or you dropped something. Or you dropped something. I don't know if you need it.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Lane Miller on behalf of the applicant Somerset Properties. This is an application seeking essentially a previously approved development plan that had been approved by this board under PLN 080015. The applicant comes before you tonight because those plans, excuse me, those approvals by their term expired, and there was a change in the setback requirements regarding your stream and the stream corridor requirements. So we are seeking getting new approval with variances relating to those stream requirements because otherwise the property would, as you'll hear, be essentially undevelopable. I'm gonna, if the board has no questions to begin with, I'll bring up our engineer to begin the testimony as to the application.
Please do so.
El Hawat.
Do you swear you're in? Do you raise your hand for me, please? Do you swear the testimony? Are you going to provide us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name for the record, and give us your address, please.
Mohamed El Hawat. That's E.L.-H.A.W.W.A.T. I'm the principal of MEH Consulting Engineers, A25 Bloomfield Avenue, Suite 106, Verona, New Jersey, 07044. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have testified in front of this board many times, and I hold a bachelor's degree in civil engineering as well as master's degree in civil engineering, and...
You're accepted. You're accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. El Hawat, would you be kind enough to explain to the board the nature of the application, the variances we're seeking, and the proposed construction?
Yes. This application was approved back in 2008 for the same footprint of the proposed building. The property known as Lot 8.04, Block 517.01. The total area is 10.611 acres. The property is located in the M1 Zone, Light Manufacturing. The property bordered by the same use in the manufacturing on the east and south side, on the west side by PSENG, and on the north side by Western Canal Road. The total area of the proposed building is 79,725 square feet, which includes 4,300 square feet of office area. The total impervious area as proposed is 31.94 percent, while the ordinance allows 60 percent. We have a total building coverage of 17.25 percent versus 50 percent allowed by the ordinance, and the total floor area ratio is 0.172 versus .5 allowed. We are proposing 92 parking spaces, 42 of which will be for future use, and the rest is to be constructed.
So you're banking those?
Sorry?
You're banking those?
Yes.
Okay.
For future use.
So it just, sorry to interrupt, but just to sort of guide you guys a little bit. So it seems to me as though, you know, the major relief being asked for here is from the stream corridor ordinance and the boundaries that one needs to seek, given the change in the stream corridor ordinance since the first approval?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
And so, for that reason, can you direct, I mean, we'll go through the staff reports, and really, all you have to do with those is just tell us anything that you disagree with or can't comply with, exceptions. If you can comply with everything, then you just say you can comply with everything. But in terms of the planning comments in Mark Healy's report of the things that you need to do to satisfy the board in order to be granted a relief, that's kind of what I'd hope that you could focus on and direct your testimony.
We can do that. We did not get those comments yet.
You did not?
I did not receive those comments. We can go through them pretty quickly.
Okay. Well, I mean, Mark, do you have a copy of your report? I don't know why they didn't get it, but I think they can probably do this on the fly since your report was dated October 1st. I mean, in terms of your hardship request, I assume you'll have a planner testify as to what's going on with that, right?
We do not have a planner here today to testify as to that.
That's a bit of a problem, because I know, if Jim were here, we might be done right now and have you come back. Because you can't, you can't ask for hardship relief without a certified planner putting that into testimony. It's going to be a variance of C1, C2, or something like that. I mean, that's a fact.
Understood.
I mean, I'm willing to hear the rest of your testimony, but frankly, I can't hear the rest of this tonight, or grant you an approval or denial, because you don't have a planner to put this into testimony.
If we had these comments, probably we would've gotten a planner, but we didn't know about the plan.
Yeah, if we'd had the comments, so, and generally, I have a pretty good relationship with Jim, so I'm surprised that we did not get them ahead of time. But if you want us to adjourn so we can come back with those?
It's up to you. I mean, we can go through some of the testimony now, if you want, in terms of what you can testify to yourself as a licensed professional engineer, and that will cut down the time that you'll probably need to come before the board when you do have your planner available. And it will give you time to read these comments, which I think are the crux of whether we can grant you an approval or not. But you could go through the staff comments as far as the engineering. You could give us the layout and save some time the next time, or we could adjourn it and do it all the next time.
When is the next meeting?
Mark or Christine?
The next meeting.
November 7th.
Perhaps if it's acceptable to the board, what we would do is adjourn and bring it back at the next meeting with the planner. I don't know what your agenda looks like. I don't know how much time you save by doing it, but it'll allow us to go through the comments.
Okay. I'm fine with that. I'm absolutely fine. I mean, you do understand right where I'm coming from.
I understand exactly where you're coming from, Mr. Chair.
All right. We'll do that. We'll carry you to November 7th.
Okay.
And let's see, do you have something that you have to, okay, so we're supposed to work on this by 10:20, so by that, by dint of that, you're going to grant us an extension to November 7th?
Absolutely. Now, if I may, rather than carry, because I do have my traffic expert here, would the board like to hear from the traffic expert at this time?
Well, in a vacuum, I'd rather probably just get it all together than...
Not a problem.
Well, let's just clarify something, is, just so the board's aware, is anything changing as far as the site plan compared to what was previously approved?
The end.
None. So the entire change is due to the change in the ordinance, so you're here because you need relief from that.
That is exactly it.
So I wanted to clarify that, Mr. Chair. I don't know if that weighs upon whether you even, frankly, even need to hear from the traffic expert, if it's the same exact thing as previous, and that's up to you.
Well, you know, I think, I think we should probably hear from the traffic expert, because I think traffic in the area probably has changed a bit since 2008, so I'd like to hear about levels of service and center of functioning. And then, you don't know necessarily, right, if we were to direct you to do something to mitigate the stream encroachment or something, and you agree to it, and it changes the traffic pattern, you know, has sequelae, correct? So I think it's probably good to just hear it in one form, since we're going to do that anyway.
Agreed.
I mean, you've got one out of the three of the folks you really need, which is your engineer, you need your planner, and your traffic person, so, or your traffic person's here, but yeah.
Yes.
But still, I think, I think it's probably, could potentially be related, so, you know, if he's got to come back anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Miller? Can you, can you just make sure that you and your, you guys sign that paper, okay? That shows, no, the one that's on the desk?
Yes.
There you go. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just one question in terms of traffic. I just wondered if you've worked with Somerset County as it's a county road being affected?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I wondered if you'd contacted and worked with Somerset County as it's the county road that's being affected.
We did give them notice of the application.
Okay.
All right, so we'll carry this until November 7th. Yeah, oh, Peter just pointed out that there is a report in our packets from the county.
Yes, from the county from July of this year.
Right, July. So save your packet. Don't leave it. All right.
Thank you, sorry for the false start.
Oh, it's all right. It happens. But just recently. So our second and actually first hearing is PSENG, PLN 1800011.
And just, Mr. Chair, we don't have to renotice, correct?
No.
Good evening. Oh, thank you so much.
Party barked as A1, excellent.
Oh, okay. Even better.
He's throwing stuff.
I'll put it together. Not a problem. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So, good evening. We're ready to go. Who's, who's the chief cook and bottle washer in this operation?
You need your...
You'd be even, even better if you take a microphone, hold it up. Yep.
Good evening. My name is Harvey Johnson. I'm an attorney, and I'm a partner with the law firm of Dwayne Morris. We're...
Yeah, to hold it a little closer to your mouse.
Thank you. Can you hear it now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
We're privileged to have the opportunity to represent Public Service Electric and Gas in a upgrade of their substation here in Franklin Township. And based on the letters from the professionals at the Franklin Township professionals, we'd like to request a design waiver for the checklist requirement to allow the site plan to be drawn in the scale of 1 inch equals 60 feet, and a waiver to allow a 16-foot driveway rather than the required 22-foot driveway. These are additions to our application suggested by the company. We will have three witnesses here tonight. The first is Margette Fall, who's the project manager from PSENG, Scott Fisher, who's the project engineer, and Brian McKee, who's a certified planner. The testimony will show that the site is located at Belmont Drive and comprises approximately 15 acres. PSENG proposes to upgrade and modernize the substation by installing new public utility process equipment to improve system reliability and station capacity. PSENG proposes to install new utility process transformers and equipment, construct a one-story combined gas insulated switchgear and control house building, install lightning rods, and relocation of some existing fencing around the perimeter of the substation. The existing air insulated switchgear will be demolished after the station is energized. The substation is located within the Light Manufacturing M1 Zone within the township. The current use of the site is a substation. The testimony will show that the substation is an integral part of the electric transmission and distribution infrastructure that serves the township and the surrounding areas. The proposed improvements will support an upgrade in service to 69 KV needed to address electric transmission system capacity and reliability, issues that are needed to replace outdated equipment. The testimony will show that there's no other feasible site or prudent alternative to the proposed improvements. The proposed improvements occur on a site that has been used to distribute power to the township of Franklin for many years. The site is directly adjacent to the electric transmission system, and the substation functions to reduce higher electric transmission voltage to a lower voltage that is appropriate for distribution into the local neighborhoods and customers. Therefore, only a location that is directly adjacent to the transmission system is appropriate for the proposed use. The existing equipment cannot meet demand and reliability parameters within the proposed upgrade, and the proposed improvements will directly address the public benefit for reliable uninterrupted service. The proposed improvements will improve current and future transmission capability, system reliability, and redundancy. We have received a letter of approval from Somerset County and an exemption from the Delaware River, Delaware and Brereton Canal Commission. I'd like to call, as our first witness, I don't know, do you swear all the men at the same time, or?
No, generally, it's one at a time, and then, once they're sworn in, if they need to come back or we have a question later on.
The first witness I'd like to call is Ms. Hall.
If you could raise your right hand for me, do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If you could state your name, spell your last name for the record, and give us your address, please.
Is the green light on the mic?
Red light.
Red light? I don't know.
Got IT working on it right now.
What?
Hello. Yeah. Nice to work in.
Thank you, Christine.
You've given the board your name and title. Could you please state your title and what you do for the company, please?
Yes, I'm a project manager of PSENG, and I've been working there for over six years.
Okay.
And are you familiar with the application that is the subject of this board matter?
Yes, I am.
You're free to sit down if you wish.
Thank you. Could you please explain the purposes of this facility and how...
So PSENG is proposing upgrades to the station as part of a statewide electric reliability improvements. The proposed improvements and modification of this facility will increase electric service reliability and system redundancy to ensure safe and reliable electric services to our customers in Franklin Township and surrounding area.
Have these improved?
Yes.
Please explain...
Sir, can you, can you hold up?
I'm sorry.
Just like a rock star.
Could you please explain to the board what currently is on the site and improvements you intend to make?
Yes. Currently, the Franklin substation is serving about 2,433 customers. Right now, the substation has a straight bus configuration and its air insulated switchgear with limited transfer capability in event of fault. We intend to install a new 69-kilovolt gas insulated switchgear, which will be housed indoor and allows for addition of increased voltage capacity without significantly expanding the station footprint, because the air insulated switchgear uses more footprint and more real estate than a gas insulated switchgear. So this GIS, gas insulated switchgear building and equipment will also accommodate a new line that we're building between Bennett's Line Substation and Franklin Substation, and that line is 69 kilovolts as well. And this improvement will help us increase the reliability of our system.
Write a summary of the proposed...
Yes. So like I mentioned, we are installing a gas insulated switchgear that's going to be rated at 69 kilovolts. That's going to be housed in a GIS building, GIS gas insulated switchgear. And this building is going to be 79 by 46 feet and 29.5 feet high, with a control building where we're going to house all our controls for the equipment, and this building will have the dimensions of 35 by 53 feet, and it will be 22 feet high. Also, also, this new building will not have water service, because we have currently a building that has water and sewer to it, so we are not adding any sewer line or water lines. We'll install two-station light and power transformers that will serve for the station lighting and all the service, power service needs for the station. However, all the power transformers, which are rated 69 to 13 kilovolts, will remain in the same footprint.
And how many employees use this facility?
This station is unmanned, so we currently have perhaps between one and two employees accessing the station for maintenance purposes or just checking in maybe once a week or every other week.
Okay. Directly to the board.
Yes. What I feel to mention on the different improvements is, this project also include the installation of duct bank system, bus system, manholes to connect the transformers that we have on site, and also the 69-kilovolt lines connected to this station. And the existing fence is remaining. However, we are relocating the southern portion of it to accommodate circulation around the GIS building. And I want to mention also that we are not removing any trees as part of these improvements.
Minimize the impact on the surrounding area.
So during construction, we'll be utilizing the two entrance gates in the station, and we will put all the construction trailers and inside the station, and we'll use the station as laydown area. We are not planning on using anything else. And this work is scheduled to start in September of 2019 until the fall of 2020, 21, and for the work hours, we'll comply with the township ordinance.
And based on your experience and knowledge of this project, is the design of the proposed facilities as set forth on the site plan and the application before the board reasonably necessary for the provision of safe, adequate, and reliable electric utility?
Yes.
And what is the need, what is the need for this improvement, and what would happen if PSENG did not construct these improvements?
So these upgrades will enhance our electric service reliability, resilience system, redundancy, and the capacity of Franklin Township and surrounding area. If these improvements are not made, transmission voltage violations may occur jeopardizing electric reliability and cause extended or long outages until repair can be made. These upgrades are necessary to increase both electrical service reliability and system redundancy to ensure safe and reliable electric service to our customers.
Thank you very much. Ms. Fall will be available to answer any questions about the management and operation on behalf of...
And let the record reflect that Dr. Chase has arrived.
I'd like to call as our next witness, Mr. Scott Fisher, who is the engineer who worked on this project.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fall.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name for the record, and give us your address, please.
My name is Scott Fisher, F.I.S.C.H.E.R., and my address is 9400 Ward Parkway, Kansas City, Missouri.
Is there a green light on?
Yeah. Kansas City, Missouri, 64114.
By whom are you employed, Mr. Fisher?
I'm employed by Burns &amp; McDonald Engineering, Inc.
And how long have you been employed with them?
I have worked there for seven and a half years, six and a half years of which I've been working on public service electric and gas substations in New Jersey.
And are you licensed as a engineer in the state of New Jersey?
I am. I am a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey.
Okay. You're accepted. Move on with the testimony.
Okay. What was your role in the design of this project?
I was the design engineer for the civil site and furthermore, the structural design.
Could you go to the site plan and just walk the board through the site plan and explain it to them, please?
Yes. So in this site...
The board has this in the package I gave to you.
This is smaller, but...
This is the same site plan that was provided to the board in its packet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So in this site plan, north is to your right, we will be using the two existing access points from...
Go down and show it to the boards.
Okay. So we'll be using these two access points from Pierce Street to the north, and the entire site is lined with the seven-foot-tall chain-link fence with the one-foot barbed wire across the top. The entire site is currently crushed rock surfacing and uses slab foundations and concrete spread footing foundations to support all the electrical equipment. The site currently drains from north to south into an existing detention basin that is beyond the fence, and the crushed rock surfacing extends all the way to the top of the basin.
Could you please discuss for the board the site improvements that you propose to make at this station?
So the proposed project is to install the 69 KV GIS hall, and in order to do that, we have to reroute the drive path around the south side. And in doing so, we're going to kick the fence out down short of the basin and still in the crushed rock surfacing that is existing, and then we will bring it back around to match up with the existing drive path. We'll also be utilizing the same two access points, and we'll be installing just spread footing foundations and slab concrete foundations for all the new equipment.
And there will be, the driveway, what are you going to do with the driveway?
So the existing drive path on the station is 16 feet wide. We're planning to maintain that as this station is not a public trafficway and does not necessitate two directions of traffic. And we are planning on using the ground macadam surfacing, which is a non-asphalt surfacing type. which is a non-asphalt surfacing. It is a crushed rock with a finer gradation.
So, given the traffic, you don't see a need for a 22-foot driveway?
We do not.
So, to that point, it appears from the engineer, our engineer comments, that the 1/60 scale waiver is not an issue to them. The driveway, they did request a design waiver. And it sounds like from comment number seven that they're most focused on whether there'll be two-way traffic. So, you're saying there really won't be two-way traffic?
No, I think the testimony already from Mrs. Fall is that there are very low numbers of people at the site. And I think that's the most important issue. So, we don't see the need, the client doesn't see the need for two-way traffic since at most times, there's only one person on the site.
And I assume that if you did extend the driveway by another six feet through its length, that you would be increasing the impervious surface of the site.
So, the net impervious surface area will actually be decreased because we're removing gravel that is currently located past the fence and replacing it with grass.
But he asked you another question. He asked if you widen it to 22 feet.
Oh, yes, that is correct.
You'd increase the impervious.
It would be, yeah, it would be more of the ground macadam, the waterbound macadam surface.
Okay, thanks. Just so I can direct things a little bit, are there any other comments in any of the staff reports that you'd like to discuss with us in terms of anything that you can't comply with or that you would like a waiver from? Besides those two things?
There was a report, CME suggested that there should be a stop sign and a stop bar at the gate. Do you think there's a need for a stop sign and a stop bar at the gate?
We do not. There is currently no stop sign installed on site, and we will be using the two access points that are already there. And since this is not a highly-traveled public access road, we do not see a need for a stop sign.
Or stop bar.
Or a stop bar.
And the reason, I think, is testified by Mrs. Fall that there's only one or two people on the site at a given time.
Okay.
Finally, this is a point that was raised. Could you explain why you need a 20-foot gate at the southeast corner of the switchyard?
So, there is currently a 20-foot gate in that location. And we, since we're shifting the fence down slightly to accommodate for the new drive path, we're just shifting the gate along with it so that it stays centered with the drive path. So, there's an existing gate that we're just shifting. And it's to be used to access the detention basin for maintenance purposes if necessary.
Unless the board has some further questions?
I have a question about the lighting. Is it all the lighting on the site going to be LED lighting?
It is the rude PSENG standard LED lighting, and it will be a proposed or 12 new light fixtures, nine of which are located on the exterior of the GIS hall. And then, there'll be three new ones on just equipment structures out in the yard and one relocated light structure that's already there. But our lighting study and plans show that we'll not be projecting any new light outside of the property line.
And they are LED?
Yeah.
Ted?
The soil and grading plan shows a disturbed area over on Belmont Avenue. Is that new?
On Belmont Avenue?
I think most of the plans don't show it, but the.
I do not believe that that is new. 0.95 acres of ours is supposed to be inside the fence, and I believe there's just a little bit outside the fence, 0.05 acres. I don't think that's along Belmont Avenue.
A small bit there, but I wondered what it was.
Yeah, I do not believe that we're doing any work outside of there.
Any further questions of this witness?
I have one correction for Christine on the report checklist, site plan, page 2, number 6. It says as a utility, the application is, and I believe the word should be exempt.
That's for me, yes.
And the.
Taking lessons from Ted?
Yes.
We seem to have a DNR Canal Commission report that refers to the PSENG property on Western Canal Road, not to this property.
My understanding was their letter was referring to this property and that we did not make enough of a disturbance to become under their jurisdiction.
That's very likely, and it would be in their B-zone anyway where they usually don't have much of a fuss.
The reasoning they used was we're not disturbing a significant amount of property that.
That's true, you're not.
Yeah, I believe we're under the one-acre threshold that they were.
Correct, I think at 0.9.
Yeah, I think they definitely do have the wrong project because they reference a 28.7-acre lot, 90 feet south of DNR Canal and in commission review zone A. So, yeah, I think they, I think somebody mixed up their pile of papers that day.
That's the property next to our other case.
Yeah.
We will get you the proper letter.
Yeah, you might just want to clarify for them that they're good with that, just so we.
Any further questions of this?
Well, just one clarification. I think you had mentioned it. So, the screening that's along Pierce Street, that what's there is staying, no disturbance to it?
Yeah, we will not be removing any trees or screening from the station.
Thank you.
Well, we have a pause in the action. Just check with the board. Does anybody have any issue with the driveway width being 16 feet? I don't.
I don't either.
I think I'm okay with that.
Everybody's good with it?
I have a question, please. Anyone of you can answer that question. During the construction of the site, the way you stated it is going to last for like, from 2019 to 2021, right? Do you guys have any mitigation plans against people who come on site unknowingly that you guys are making constructions? Something to guard against, should I say, accident that are not probably envisaged around that time?
So, I think I can answer that. During construction, we always provide temporary fences if necessary to make sure the station is completely excluded from public.
Right.
And we also have signage on the outside of the fences that say warning, electrical hazard, and keep people out. We also will have gates with people to check in during construction.
The gates will be closed.
Yes, and monitored.
The reason why I ask that question because you are dealing with power lines, right? Transformers. People who, out of, want to know what is going on, trespass. So, we want to guard against that, right?
Absolutely.
Usually during construction. Yes, so usually during construction, we have a safety watch on site all the time, every time. And also, most of the time, we have a security guard at the gate, too.
Okay.
So, and we always keep our gates closed and no trespassing.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board? We'd like to call as our final witness Mr. McPeak, who's a civil engineer. We'd like him to be sworn, please.
Thank you.
Certified planner, I'm sorry.
Yes, good evening.
I thought it was. I thought it might be. We figured that out as we went along. If you could raise your right hand for me, do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please, for the record.
Brian McPeak, M-C-P-E-A-K. I am a senior project planner with Paulus Okolowski and Sartor Engineering LLC with addresses at 67B Mountain Boulevard Extension in Warren Township, New Jersey. Excuse me.
Are you an expert before a planning board in the state of New Jersey?
I have, but not as a civil engineer, only as a professional planner.
I'm sorry.
Okay, well, you're accepted.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Done with the review of the property and its surroundings?
Yes, I have. I've visited the site and surrounding areas. I can walk through an aerial if it pleases the board.
Give us the first exhibit, please.
I'm sure you're very familiar with the area, but just to give some context to the surrounding conditions. And I'll just mosey over for a second. The substation is located here within the property that's the subject of the application. It's within the M-1 district as has been identified. And I think the rooftops largely tell the story of a light manufacturing, warehousing, distribution area. This is a Nissan Infinity facility currently under construction, so it's probably familiar to the board as it may have been here recently. But these facilities all represent essentially light manufacturing warehouse and distribution facilities. There's a publishing operation here. This is a paint manufacturer. There are some isoteric uses in the area. There's a residence here. There's a residence here. There's a couple residents here. This is a fire station and a few residents along this area. But essentially, it is a light industrial area with quite a bit of warehousing and distribution activity as well.
And just for the record, Mr. McPeak, what you were referring to was the exhibit marked A1 for identification. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
It's an aerial of the property, surrounding the subject property and the subject property.
That is correct.
Perfect, thanks.
And have you reviewed the application submitted by Public Service?
Yes, I have.
And could you explain what you reviewed?
Sure. The application proposes to upgrade and modernize the Franklin substation by installing new public utility process equipment to improve system reliability and station capacity. The specifics of it have been reviewed with the board a couple of times, but basically, there's new transformers and a new one-story insulated switchgear and control house building. This is intermittent. The, some lightning rods are installed, and part of the fence surrounding the substation is relocated to provide circulation within the fenced area around that new building. Project is proposed to address continued electric transmission and distribution reliability. As such, it's got a, has a public benefit to the community.
Do the Franklin Township planning documents and land development elements?
Review the items. I've reviewed the current land development ordinance, the 2006 Franklin Township master plan, including the June 2007 amendments, the July 2008 amendments, fall 2009 amendments, the October 2012 amendments, and the 2016 reexamination of the master plan and development regulations. The town's website actually also has a fall 2013 master plan amendment, but the link on that doesn't appear to be working, so I haven't had the opportunity to review that portion of the master plan.
We'll get our IT on that, too.
Okay.
So, I think we're all convinced that it's nice to keep the lights on. And so, you know, and you've got no variances here. So, I think, you know, unless you have necessarily anything above and beyond what we've already heard, I think we're good, and we can probably just entertain any board questions, open this to the public, and move forward.
I would just say one thing. We provided in our exhibits, on your application, there was some confusion as to where numbers should go. And what we provided to you is what we feel is specific actions and measurements. Doesn't change. We still don't require any variances, but I'm just making it clear that, for the record, we provided that to you.
Are you referring to A6?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for that. Does the board have any questions of any of the witnesses?
I believe I'm really impressed for one thing. You want to do official, for official capacity utilization, right? That is why you have that station to serve the community. We should believe we go hand-in-hand with recent development. As we pointed out, we are having a lot of warehouses springing up. And with that new substation improvement, that will help the community to grow and also reduce the incidence of, let's say, tragedies around, just within the community. Thank you.
All right. One quick thing on the review comments under number one in Mark Haley's report. It says the application complies with the conditional use standards, paragraph 112-48. Just can you confirm that there exists no school, church, or other public buildings within 100 feet of the site?
Yes, based on a review of the surrounding conditions, I can confirm that there are no.
School, church, or other public buildings?
Schools, churches, or other public buildings within 100 feet of the site.
And can you also confirm from your cover letter dated the 10th of August 2018 that no permanent storage of vehicles or outdoor storage of materials is proposed, and no accommodations for the permanent storage of vehicles or outdoor storage of materials appear to be present on the proposed site plan?
That is correct. There is no permanent storage materials proposed by the applicant.
Thank you. You good? Okay. If there's any other board questions, let's entertain a motion to open to the public.
I'll move open to the public at this time.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anybody from the public wishing to comment on this application only?
Seeing.
Yeah. Well, just let's close the public, and then I'll come back to you.
Seeing no one coming forward for this public hearing, I would move that the public hearing be closed.
Second to motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your motion carries now.
Yes, in the letter from CME, they had suggested that Public Service provide a performance bond. And we think we're exempt from the statute on that and don't have to provide it. And we don't have to provide it anywhere else where we're doing these upgrades. So, I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
They may be exempt based on the new law, but we can review that with the engineer.
I've reviewed.
Yeah, I think, I mean, the law is the law. I'm not sure we have to decide that now and if they're exempt or that they're exempt.
We would require them to provide a bond as required by law. If they're not required to provide one by law, then they don't have to provide one.
Much better than I did, thank you.
I do what I can. I'm here all night. Try the veal.
Why is it four?
Well, we know where to find you. Always follow one of the trucks, right? All right, so if there's nothing else from the board, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve this application.
Okay.
And we'll just amend that with that we also approve the design waiver for the 16-foot driveway, the scale being 1/60. And there was one other thing I thought. Was it the fence? No stop sign.
With those additions, yes.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansur?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
And Chairman Rascini?
Yes.
We thank the board for your time and consideration.
Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else tonight? All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So, I'll.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We are done here. November 7th is the next meeting.